Well, good morning and welcome to the regular board meeting of the Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, May 21st, 2013. And I'd like to begin today's meeting with a moment of silence for the people of Oklahoma, and especially for the children who are lost in this terrible tornado. Now would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Roll call.
Supervisor Pine.
Here.
Supervisor Groom.
Present.
Supervisor Slocum.
Here.
Supervisor Tessier.
Here.
President Horsley.
Here. Now time for a public comment for items that are not on the regular agenda. And the first one is Marty Fox, followed by Dave Hansen.
Good morning, honorable members of the Board. President Horsley, thank you for your service to the county. Please have mercy on persons living with mental illness who lack insight needed to seek treatment and their family members by voting to implement Laura's Law. Laura's Law is a positive outcome-producing procedure that creates a treatment-compliance behavioral situation which has been certified to be effective, efficient, and economical by the United States Department of Justice. Policies and procedures that limit mental health treatment to only those persons living with mental illness who have the capacity to understand their need to volunteer for treatment endangers the mentally ill, like 28-year-old Ruben Ramirez, who was not taking his medication before seriously injuring his three-year-old niece and murdering his 48-year-old mother, Yolanda Ramirez, and his one-year-old nephew, Gabriel Ortiz, in the family home last Wednesday. A report of violence at the home involving Ruben had been brought to the attention of the Santa Clara County Sheriff's Department, who dispatched deputies less than a week before. Laura's Law creates a treatment-compliance behavioral situation that reflects the assumption of responsibility for public health and safety. Laura's Law is an evidence-based practice that stands in stark contrast to ineffective, expensive, and inhumane policies and procedures that perpetuate the cycle of injuries and death by ignoring treatment resistance. Please have mercy on persons living with mental illness who lack the insight needed to seek treatment voluntarily. Vote to implement Laura's Law and demonstrate a commitment to obtaining positive outcomes. Send the expensive experiments proposed on February 5th to the ash heap of history and demonstrate the leadership needed to promote health and safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Dave Hansen?
Harrison.
For the record, it's Dave Harrison. Members of the Board?
Oh.
Dave Harrison, I'm with the operating engineers, Local 3. I'm here today to speak on Consent Agenda Item 53A. It's a Doc 29 project and specifically opposing staff's recommendation to award that project to Salt River Construction. What we have today is a pretty simple problem with a little bit of a twist. We've got a contractor by way of Vortex Marine Construction who is the lowest responsible bidder by public contract code definition, who made a simple clerical error in their bid and supported that error with a sworn affidavit. They listed a supplier incorrectly as a subcontractor, and by doing so, their bid was thrown out. It was a clerical error, an honest error. On the other hand, we have a contractor in Salt River Construction who has got a horrible history of dishonesty and distrust. Most recently, at San Mateo County Harbor District, they were thrown off of a bid for just exactly that. They lied on their bid contract, and when we came to the bid protest hearing, they continued to lie. And through that, I submitted some documents that with county staff that showed they were thrown out because of that. We've got a contractor with an immaculate safety record, on one hand, and on the other hand, with Salt River Construction with a horrible safety record with construction fatalities in their past, substance abuse policies that aren't in place to prevent those from happening again as they had. We've got a handful of equipment to be proud of, on one hand, and a handful of equipment that's gonna smoke if it doesn't sink. It's a sinking fleet. I think the choice for me is simple, for you, obviously, not so simple. What I'm looking for today is hopefully to pull Consent Item 53A from the calendar and step up and oppose staff's recommendation to award that contract to Vortex Marine Construction, and in doing so, save the county $50,000. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Sorry for mispronouncing that. Now it's time to set the agenda into approve or not approve the consent agenda items.
I'll make a motion to set the agenda into approve consent agenda items.
Any comments?
I'll second.
Okay, there be no other comments. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, on to the next. The first presentation is a presentation of a proclamation designating May 19th through the 25th as 2013 as Emergency Medical Services Week. It's my pleasure to ask for a motion to approve that proclamation.
Show move.
All in favor?
Second. Second.
That's right, I needed a second. Thank you very much. And all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The American College of Emergency Physicians was actually instrumental in establishing EMS Week when Gerald Ford was the president, and he declared on November 3rd, 1974, as the first National Emergency Medical Services Week. I just wanted to read a little section of the proclamation, gives you an idea of specifically how important this is. It goes, "The success of San Mateo County's EMS system begins with the commitment of our pre-hospital providers, including more than 30 San Mateo County Fire, EMS, public safety dispatchers who answer the 911 calls and stay in communication with callers until help arrives." Having some personal experience having made some 911 calls in my time, I can tell you that one of the things that they do is they actually walk you through the process and procedures and things that you should do to stabilize that patient. It's really a rather remarkable system, and I think that, really proud of the fact that I think our communications center actually runs probably, I think, the best 911 center. So, in any case, more than 825 San Mateo County pre-hospital emergency services medical groups, fire-based emergency medical technicians, EMTs, and paramedics who arrive and initiate basic and advanced emergency medical care, and there are more than 150 American Medical Response people, that's AMR, transporting EMTs and paramedics who continue providing basic and advanced emergency treatment from the scene through transport to the hospital. You know, actually, these first responders are people that, you know, in some sense, you really never want to see, in a sense, but when you need them, there's nobody that you would really rather see. Their training, their medical knowledge, not to mention their bravery of the folks who make their living as emergency medical services personnel is really impressive and really deserving of recognition. So, in any case, we have a first speaker. I just want to make one mention of one of our fire personnel from Meadow Park Fire, Harold Chapuhuman, who was really instrumental in our use of our teams and has been to a number of disaster scenes throughout the United States, including Oklahoma. Recently had a really terrible accident at his home, and so our prayers and thoughts are with Harold and his family. So, the first speaker is, let me give you the proclamation, is Louise Rogers, our Deputy Chief.
Oh, I think we need the whole gang.
Well, good morning, President Horsley, members of the Board, Mr. Holland, Mr. Maltby, and Mr. Byers. It's my pleasure, as the acting EMS director, to acknowledge the EMS staff who are here. You could wave. As well as introduce the leaders of our partner agencies, who together comprise San Mateo County's excellent emergency medical services system, as well as demonstrate the theme of this year's EMS Week, which is One Mission, One Team. So, we have John Odell, who is, do you want to wave? John is Executive Director of San Mateo County's Pre-Hospital Emergency Medical Services Group, which we also refer to as the JPA. Ron Myers, who is Chief of the North County Fire Authority, also representing the JPA. Brad White, who is General Manager of AMR, American Medical Response, the ambulance system. Francine Seraphine Dixon, who is Executive Director of the Hospital Consortium, as well as Chair of our Emergency Medical Services Coordinating Committee. And I don't think we have Jamie here today, Director of the Office of Public Safety Communications, but she also plays a very important role in our partnership. So, we've asked Francine to say a few words on behalf of our group.
Good morning, President Horsley, Supervisors Groom, Pine, Tessier, Slocum, Mr. Holland, Mr. Maltby, and Mr. Byers. I'm really quite honored to be standing here in front of these people who do the work. I am Chair of the EMCC, and so, as a result, I'm accepting this proclamation. And it's on behalf of all county EMS staff, those you see sitting here and those out in the field, and those waiting right now for calls, and all the EMS providers in our county who care for those in emergency medical care for a 24/7 basis, for those in our county, as well as those who are visiting our county. And as Louise mentioned, the Office of Public Safety Communication takes that first call of 911, and then dispatches out to JPA Fire Service, then AMR responders, and then ultimately the patients, if needed, and become a patient, then arrive at the hospitals where the doctors and nurses and healthcare professionals provide the care that they need. So, it truly is a team, so the mission of this week's EMS Week is very appropriate. And I want to give you two examples of this teamwork. About two weeks ago, a STEMI process was put in place, and people wonder, what is a STEMI? Even those in healthcare ask, what is STEMI? It's the most serious heart attack that one can have. And with all of the hospitals in our county, the lead taken by EMS, our county staff, the hospitals have been designated as STEMI-receiving centers. So, when a 911 call occurs for a heart attack, the responders are able to assess that patient and decide what type of treatment is needed, and most likely can do the assessment that an EKG is needed. That EKG is transmitted to the hospital where the patient will be delivered, so when the hospital arrives with the responders, bringing them to the hospital, there's a cardiac team ready to intervene and restore the blood supply to the heart in a very timely fashion. So, we're very proud to have that up and running, and we will be doing a fair amount of community education in the future to let people know to call 911, which is still one of our biggest obstacles to get people to call 911. A second example of teamwork was last week when one of our Fire Service took the lead in handing out stroke cards to the Caltrain stations in our county and all of the stations BART-wide. So, what took place, there was probably about 100 first responders and hospital staff who were actually at all of these stations handing out these cards. I'm gonna pass them down, and it's fast. This is also stroke month, but it's another example of teamwork of the EMS system. Like a deck of cards. Thanks. So, I'm very proud to be part of this vital service that is so well organized and delivered in our county. We're fortunate to have such compassionate, calm, and caring individuals who are committed to providing our citizens with the best care possible when 911 is called. Thank you very much.
Is that it? Okay, I just want to make point out that Lee Michelson is in the audience, and Lee at Sequoia Healthcare District, they supplied all the AEDs for police and fire, as well as these devices that are called Lucas Devices. And if any of you don't know what they are, is that instead of doing CPR with your hand, this device actually does it automatically, and I know that the fire departments are now equipped with it, so congratulations to the Sequoia Healthcare District for, I think you're really forward-thinking on this, so, thank you. Thanks for your presentation, appreciate that. Next presentation is a, unless anyone wants to make a comment? Comments? No? It's a presentation of a proclamation designating May 2013 as Older Americans Month. Supervisor Adrianne Tessier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna make a motion on this proclamation, and then I wanted to say a few words and then bring Dennis O'Sullivan forward to make a presentation as well. So, I'm making a motion to adopt the proclamation.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The month of May is recognized nationally as Older Americans Month to highlight and acknowledge the unique contributions of seniors to our local communities as well as to our nation. San Mateo County Board of Supervisors, in compliance with the Older Americans Act, established the San Mateo County Commission on Aging, November 12th, 1969. The Commission on Aging has advised the Board and worked extensively on senior issues, including health and nutrition, affordable and accessible housing, employment opportunities, legislation, elder abuse, transportation, and new resources and services. San Mateo County recognizes its responsibility to ensure just treatment and quality services to our senior populations. A rapidly growing segment of the San Mateo County population, residents aged 60 and older, are expected to account for almost 29% of the county's population by 2030. By celebrating Older Americans Month, San Mateo County acknowledges that older Americans have contributed greatly to all aspects of society and deserve to have their rights and privileges protected. So, our Board of Supervisors here today is designating May 2013 as Older Americans Month here in San Mateo County. And with that, I'd like to present the proclamation to Dennis O'Sullivan and all those that are here from the Commission on Aging, and welcome to come up as well. And then Dennis will be making a presentation.
Those of you on the Board of Supervisors who've been a supervisor in the time that I've been Chair of this committee will recognize the coat, because I've now used it four years in a row. And this will be the last time you see it since I'm termed out. But my, excuse me, my--
We could get you a new coat.
My point is, that best reflects what we think we do and what should be done. So, let me tell you what we did this year. Silver Alert, Silver Alert. Know it sounds like we're in a rut, but we started it three years ago, and we didn't start it. We started bringing it up in and around the county. Two of our Commissioners, David Gilson, he's here, Kevin Worth, who's not, and then Alan Newell from the Commission on Disabilities actively pushed this. Senate Bill 1047 was signed by Governor Brown in September, and so, we are all thankful for that. We set up a, thank you, we set up a special committee to push this, and special committees in our vernacular mean they go away at some point in time, and we thought it would go away when the bill was passed, but it's gonna remain because the bill has to be implemented, and there's a number of things in the bill that need to be changed, so there need to be some modifications as time goes on, like age, and it's got a sunset provision in it. I'm sure you all know what Silver Alert is. It's sort of, it's Amber Alert for people like me, and it's a really important program. 19 states now have it. What else did we do? Adopt a Senior Center. Many of you will remember this program. It started two years ago. The first part of the program was moving our monthly public meeting around the county to various senior centers. We did it for two years. It was very effective, and, you know, everything has a time in the life, and the time in the life of this one is over. But we managed to go to a number of places, see a lot of people that we hadn't seen before, and Supervisor Tessier was at the first one. We had 75 people at the Dodger Center presentation or COA meeting, and last week at our COA meeting, somebody helped me, I don't think, we had seven people. So, we managed to get to where we need to go, and it's--
I guess I need to go to Alden then, huh?
Yeah. No, we didn't, actually. So, the Commission's gonna have, the group is gonna have a different name, because the focus is gonna change. The new effort is on isolated and missing seniors, which is, when I joined the Commission was something close to my heart, is I watched what we were doing, and I worked our table at the health fairs, I would see the same people. You know, I'd look across the street and see two young women who were neighbors of mine who were in their 90s, who never went to anything and didn't know anything, and when they fall, they called me, which is wonderful, I happen to live across the street, but nobody's paying any attention to them. We need to find them, and at least help them understand what's available. The Senior Center of the Future is, we all know senior centers need to change, goes without saying, the baby boomer population is gonna change that. Sadly, I'm not old enough to be, I'm too old to be a baby boomer, but I reflect part of it. If it weren't for the Commission, I would never have been in a Senior Center, and I think that's fairly typical. And then the virtual Senior Center, or Senior Centers Without Walls, this program has actually started and ongoing in San Diego and is pretty successful. So, you know, without trying to reinvent the wheel, we're gonna steal it. Oh, I must have liked that one, sorry. What else? Adult Abuse Prevention. We moved it in-house. This used to be a collaborative outside the Commission, and we had people that would participate. We moved it in-house into the Commission to make it a standing committee, and the value of that is Commissioners are required to serve on two committees. This is one of those in which they can serve and help. We put out, we have two co-chairs. They are Melody Lou, who's not here today, she's working, and Solad Edmane, who is also working. By the way, we now have, for the first time, more than 50% of our Commissioners have full-time jobs or run businesses. We're gonna, they're running an effort, starting, I think that's tomorrow or the next day, making the invisible visible. Adult abuse is invisible. People see it, but they don't see it. People don't see it because part of it's the abuse is from families, and it's a striking kind of abuse. So, we're using the theater of the oppressed, and don't try and get me to explain it, I know some of the detail, but the best way to do is go watch it. It's an interactive group that takes the audience and the professionals and have them work, engage themselves to try and figure out what some of the issues are. And I always ask, then what are we gonna do? And the answer to that is, we're not sure until the two workshops are over, but we have some ideas. But it is now a working group within the Commission and doing some good things. Membership. We started this two years ago, and it's been an excellent group. We have four open positions at the moment, we have 12 candidates. The last year, we had seven openings, we had 12 candidates, so, it's working. We started a brochure two years ago, it's up time to revamp it, we're doing that. This will eventually become our outreach group, not just membership, outreach to the community for a number of things. Supervisor Groom, you'll like this, this is where our youth Commissioners hide. So, we have two this year. We had one last year, this year we have two. I don't think we'll take three next year, but, I know, I knew you'd say that, so I'd beat you to the punch. Then, I think one of the more important things we did, starting in December, is a review of the Commission itself. It's things like, how are we doing? What are we doing? Why are we doing it? And what should we be doing? I think that kind of reflection has to occur. This Commission has been in existence, somebody will get me wrong, but 39 years, and when I started seven years ago, it looked like it did 37 years ago, so, we thought, and maybe it should look that way, we don't know. So, we started that, we did a, we looked at it from the Commissioners' perspective, these are the 21 people who are actually doing the work, and so, we did a couple of things. We did a survey of the Commissioners, one of our Commissioners developed the survey, you have it in the packet. We got the responses, we had a working session, excuse me. Our January public meeting was in fact a working session, where we divided the Commissioners into three groups and worked through the issues, some of the issues that the survey identified. We are in the process of giving feedback. We promised the Commissioners we would do that all year long, and we do it at every meeting. And some changes are occurring, too. We just identified and announced at the Commission meeting last week, we're gonna start an education work group. We've long had, not long had, several years had, an orientation program for new Commissioners. Last year, we had a reception form for the first time. Now that orientation is gonna be year-long. The other is, we found, most Commissioners don't understand the programs that we administer under the Older Americans Act, that's $3.7 million. So, we're going to take each one of those and run a little program for everybody to learn what that is, and where's the money going? And there'll be more. I'm big on report cards, you know, Catholic schools, grade school, high school, university, always get a report card, right? Here's what we said we'd do, and we didn't do it. Healthcare bulletins, we didn't produce anymore. The good news is, the next one is hot off the press and is in the hands of the county folks who have to approve it. We've gotten it back on cycle. That, I think, is a critical program, and I think it's gonna work this time. Financial Wellness Program was a program that we thought we could put on, we lost the Commissioner who had the skill to do it. When I'm done with being Chair, which maybe it's this afternoon, but it isn't, I might take that one on next year. Social Media was also mine. We had a perfect example where we should have used it. Our last executive committee only had three people participating, weren't voting on anything, yet we all drove to Aging and Adult Services to meet, which was a waste of time. We should have done it with Skype or GoToMeeting or something. If we have to vote, I get it, but most of the things, we don't have anything to vote on. So, we'll fix those. Well, now you're stuck. These are my thoughts. Well, they're not exactly my thoughts. I put it together, I went to the Commission last week and said, this is what I'm gonna say, if you don't want me to say it, okay. So, you're gonna wonder, what are all these names? Where are my personal favorite, Meryl Streep? George Clooney, notice it went rather slow, because he's getting older. What do all those people have in common? I'll answer, because I don't have all day to take up all of your day. What they have in common, one, is they're very rich. They're celebrities, and they all have a cause. If you Google celebrities and causes, you'll get eight million hits. Now, some of it's self-serving in their case, I get it, but most of it really is not. And so, all of their causes pretty much fall into these four categories. There's a lot of sponsorship for children, I'm hardly one to object to that with five children and 14 grandchildren. Diseases, everybody's got a disease. I'm not suggesting that the aging population be considered a disease, but some of my children think it might be true. The environment, it's, you know, everybody wants to focus on the environment, and animals, and there's a few others, but what's missing? Aging adults. Nobody represents us publicly. Who speaks for us? I can't think of anybody. There's a lot of people who talk, but nobody speaks for us, nobody, you can't identify a person like Tom Hanks and say, Tom Hanks, older adults, aging population, seniors, whatever you want to call them. I think, this is in my opinion, but shared by the Commission, we as a society do not do enough for our aging population. Certain ethnic groups do, and do tremendous work, but as a culture, the United States does not do enough. And I think you'll find a lot of people that do a little bit of the work that I do will share that opinion. Older Americans Act, which you talked about, didn't get reauthorized last year. There's a message right there, it didn't get reauthorized. It's on the books to be reauthorized this year, and if it is, it's 2.3 billion, it was 1.7 billion, and if you divide that by the number of seniors, that's 40 bucks a senior. That's not enough for lunch at the Half Moon Bay Senior Center. Now, I recognize the foible of that number, because the Older Americans money doesn't go to every senior, if it goes to those that are eligible, that number jumps all the way up to 300. If it goes to those that are eligible, that number jumps all the way up to 300. It's not enough. Older Americans, I'm not suggesting we get rid of it, but I'm saying, that's not even close to enough. My opinion, our county does the best job in the state. I participate in a group called TAC. In fact, I'll be there Thursday and Friday of this week. It's the other representatives like me who chair the other commissions, and there's 33 of them. I haven't been to one in a year and a half, because I read the reports and I say, why am I gonna waste my time? They, they're not doing anything that has, of any value. They're reporting what other people does, and every one of them asks for our report. There's a message there. The county, our county does the best. So I'm saying to you, why don't we lead the way in senior citizens? And, and it isn't, they don't just exist here. There's 91,000 in the county. You know the numbers as well as I do. There's gonna be big numbers as we move along. But, you know, there's 57 million people in this age group. And not all of them are here. And all, not all of them live here. Many have relatives and all over the country. It's a universal issue. Where is our Dr. Luther King, Martin Luther King, when we need him? Support 3562, I would like you to do that. You'll get a recommendation from our legislative committee. That's the current Older Americans Act bill. They're still fighting about it, but we're gonna send that to you, so you'll have it. And what I think needs to be done is, I think the county ought to establish a true commission on aging and fund it. Not just take Older Americans Act money, that we then approve what goes out to senior centers. Let's lead the way. Let's figure out what the issue is. Let's find Dr. Martin Luther King. And I think we can do that. You know, dare to try it. Those of you who've seen my last three presentations will recognize this quote. And I'm relentless about this quote. I've done enough of them where I flunked, but I did enough of them where it worked. And I think the county should, could belly up and try and lead the way, and I think we'd be doing something important. My last presentation. There's our constituency. Evelyn is on our commission. Melody's on our commission. Stephen is here. The one with the cane is my personal favorite. Those of you who know, will notice, I didn't have my cane. I threw it away after my last knee surgery. So I now have two metal knees and didn't get through security, so. So security's working. That's David Gilson, our vice chair. And one last Commissioner D. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Excellent presentation. Does anybody have any questions for Dennis? Any comments? Okay, thank you. And thank you to those commission on aging commissioners that are here with us today.
Thank you. Well, thanks for bringing that to our attention. Next presentation is by the Peninsula Partnership Leadership Council Early Learning Initiative. Supervisor Carol Groom.
Thank you, President Horsley. It's my honor today to introduce my colleagues, my partners in crime, Vice President from Silicon Valley Community Foundation Erica Wood, and the Superintendent of County Office of Education Ann Campbell. And they're going to lead you through this presentation called "The Big Lift."
Good morning, President Horsley, members of the board. Mr. Holland, Mr. Maltby, and Mr. Byers. We really appreciate the opportunity to be here today on behalf of the Peninsula Partnership Leadership Council. I do have to take a moment, though, to say, as having recently become a card-carrying Medicare member, I really appreciate the Commission on Aging's comments today. And I also, on behalf of the 93,000 K through 12 students enrolled in our public schools, want to extend a big thank you to our emergency medical services group and the work that Louise Rogers has done, having been a school principal and a school superintendent. The prompt, expert, and calming response that we get from emergency services personnel is certainly appreciated. So thanks for all that you do. So the partner, the Peninsula Partnership Leadership Council, who Erica, Carol, and I represent here today, is a collaborative of 50 organizations that represent government, direct service groups, foundations, and business. We came together because we realized that improving the well-being of our children and youth wouldn't happen if we each continued to operate in our individual silos. To achieve, to achieve the change that's needed requires working together on shared goals, resulting in a collective impact that is far greater than the sum of our individual efforts. Several years ago, the PPLC created a Bill of Rights for Children that was not only adopted widely throughout the county, but by the state as a whole. And we certainly appreciate the wonderful support that we got from the Board of Supervisors here in that effort to move the Bill of Rights for Children and Youth forward. But when we think about the lofty goals that are represented in the Bill of Rights, we've come to a realization as the PPLC that we've now got to make those goals operational, and we have to make them real for the children and youth in San Mateo County. So after a careful process of analysis and review, the PPLC has decided to focus in the last year or so on really looking at the issue of third-grade reading proficiency, and how can we improve that in schools and communities throughout our county. I'd like to share some facts with you today about San Mateo County and about our children that you may not know. Fully 42% of our county's third graders, that's 3,000 children, are not reading at grade level. This statistic rises to a shocking 60% when we consider the achievement of our Latino, African-American, and Pacific Islander children. The reason that this is so critical is that before third grade, children must learn to read. But after third grade, they must read to learn. If they can't read proficiently by third grade, it's increasingly difficult for them to learn history, science, and with our common core math standards now, to even tackle math problems. So reading proficiently by third grade is a critical inflection point. Children who are behind at this point tend to stay behind. And significantly, when you look across the United States on a national basis, 88% of high school dropouts could not read proficiently when they finished the third grade. So if 42% of our children here in San Mateo County can't read well by third grade, they will struggle academically, many dropping out of school, and they will be very unlikely to qual, to qualify for the knowledge-based jobs that are the hallmark of the global economy that we're all working in today. The cost is unacceptably high for everyone, and includes significantly lower productivity and competitiveness, lower tax revenue, higher social costs in terms of public health and remedial education, and more crime and more spending on prisons. So by now, you may be wondering, well, why can't children read proficiently by the end of third grade? What are our schools doing wrong, and why don't they just fix the problem? And certainly, as schools, we work very, very hard to help our kids get to proficiency and continue to explore new strategies for continuing to face this problem. But the fact of the matter is, when you rewind the tape, fully 50% of our children are not ready for kindergarten when they walk through the door of their kindergarten classroom on their first day of school. They lack fundamental social, emotional, and academic skills. This is because there is no coordinated system of quality early care and education for our children from birth to age five in San Mateo County. Families either provide preschool and enrichment themselves, or their children arrive at kindergarten behind from day one. Families with resources can pay for quality preschool, and they do. Their children benefit from licensed teachers who teach academic content and develop the social and emotional skills that children need to be ready for kindergarten. But even those who can afford a good preschool can't always find a quality program in San Mateo County. Families without resources can't pay for quality preschool. Their children's achievement gap is the result of a significant opportunity gap. Other opportunity gap factors include low inequitable school funding and limited access to books, the internet, and enrichment experiences. Adding to the challenge, fully 37% of our county's children are English language learners. This chart shows that efforts to close the opportunity gap in middle or high school are way too late. The opportunity gap means that children without quality preschool arrive at kindergarten way behind the others who did have access to quality preschool. Teachers struggle with children who have such different skill levels and who often don't speak English. Four years later, when that group of children who enter kindergarten are done with third grade, 42% of them are not reading at grade level. And that gap, as you can see from the graph, persists through high school. So what might a solution be? Well, the PPLC strongly believes that we need a systems response to a systems problem. Specifically, we need quality preschool for all three- and four-year-olds in our county so that they will come to kindergarten ready to thrive in school. And we need all-day kindergarten, which is currently optionable, optional, to be standard in our public schools. We need programs to help sustain children's reading progress as they reach the critical inflection point of third grade. That means good solutions for chronic absence problems and learning differences, and it also means quality summer programs so that children don't lose ground during the long vacation break. That gives you a sense of some of the issues that we've been discussing at the PPLC. And I'd like to introduce Erica Wood to you now, who will continue this presentation. Thank you very much.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So I don't know about all of you in the room, but when I listen to those data, they sometimes have the effect of washing over and making me numb. And the reality is, we're not doing right by our kids. And we're particularly not doing right by our low-income kids and kids of color. So the Peninsula Partnership Leadership Council, rather than ignoring the data, rather than becoming numb, has taken the information very seriously and is mobilizing itself around a plan of action. A plan of action that we think is focused, measurable, and actionable, most importantly. And that plan was not pulled out of the air. The plan was based on a year's worth of research, analysis, interviews with experts, and a review of similar plans that have been done in 20 cities across the country. We're calling it "The Big Lift," the Big Lift because we know it's ambitious and because we know it's gonna take years to accomplish. But if any county can do it, San Mateo County can. And I would acknowledge the leadership that's represented on the board, because we know you guys can make good things happen. So let me break down what looks like a rather complicated slide here and call your attention to a couple of important elements. The first is our overall goal. And our overall goal is to go from 52% of our third graders reading proficiently by the time they finish third grade to 80% by 2020. And beyond 2020, we want all of our kids reading proficiently by the time they finish third grade, for all the reasons that Ann just talked about. And in order to do this, there's a couple of big system changes that we need to make. They're not gonna be easy. They're gonna take time. They're gonna take resources and leadership. But those two changes, big changes are to provide quality preschool for all three- and four-year-olds in San Mateo County. And, and to make full-day kindergarten the rule and not the exception. But that's not enough. That's about getting kids off to the best possible start when they enter kindergarten. We also need to sustain their progress over time. So we need to pay real close attention to things like ensuring our kids and families have a good transition from their preschool experiences into the public school experience. We need strategies to improve attendance. Research tells us that kids from underserved communities are four times more likely to be chronically absent. This is significant, because every day matters. Instructional time matters. And countries that are doing far better than the United States in terms of educational outcomes have, have gotten that, and they've increased the school year. So that instructional time is really important. Similarly, our summers are important. Students can learn, can lose as much as two months of reading progress without summer support. So we think they need inspiring summers that bring enrichment and academic support along with the things that they love to do. So where are we now? We will be, in a few short weeks, maybe days now, May 31st, we'll be convening 80 county leaders to share the plan. And the purpose of that gathering is really to build the political will and the champions that can get behind this. After that session, we'll have more information, and we plan to come back and give you a more detailed update on June 18th. And in closing and thinking about this presentation, I would say a couple of things. You know, that we need to think big here. We need to be transformative and not let a lack of imagination and incrementalism get in the way. We need high-quality preschool for all three- and four-year-olds. We need full-day kindergarten. These are big changes. It's a big lift, and we recognize that. And we need bold and courageous leadership and a sense of urgency to act now. So if we think big and transformational, we bring the leadership to bear, we'll achieve the big lift. It won't be an if, it'll be a when. And if we do that, it's gonna mean better educational outcomes for our kids and greater prosperity for the county. So I think Supervisor Groom is gonna say a few closing remarks, and then we're happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Erica. Thank you, Ann. I'm very proud to be, to be a part of this. I'd also like to introduce the consultants that have been helping us put together a lot of the thought processes. Joe Rodriguez and Jane Garner in the corner here. They have been invaluable to the Peninsula Partnership Leadership Council. And if you have questions, we'd be happy to answer them. I would just add one final thing. This is, this is a prevention strategy. Getting children reading and enjoying school and doing well in school is a strategy that makes us a healthier community, a smarter community. Prepares, prepares children for post-secondary education, post-secondary careers, whatever it is that this, that this, the young people want to do. But it gets them through high school and onto a whole new life. I think it's no, no, no big exaggeration to say that it will reduce some of our healthcare costs, it will reduce some of our criminal justice costs, and it just const, it just makes San Mateo County a much better place to, to live, raise our children. So with that, we'd be, the three of us would be happy to take questions. And we will be back on June 18th to, to make a formal measure A request.
Any questions? Supervisor Tessier?
Just a quick question. Along with this, if you're bringing all these leaders together on 31st, are you including our libraries in, in supporting the, the whole reading issue?
We have, on our steering committee, which is, grows and grows, we have two members of the San Mateo County library system.
Oh, okay.
And, and actually, you know, I'll, I'll put a plug in for our libraries, one of my favorite things. They do such good work now with, with reading classes, summer reading, teaching moms how to read to the children. But we can always do more. But the libraries are included in this. We have healthcare in the, in the team. We have libraries. We have elected officials. We have plan, commissioners. We have foundation leadership. We have a very broad-based leadership group.
And I just have one other question. Is there any summer school at all during the summer anymore? I mean, when we were growing up, there was always summer school.
I will say yes, and let Ann answer it in much more detail. But there's not enough.
There are a few summer school programs that really are designed, particularly at the high school level, for credit recovery for students who are trying to get on target to graduate. But the summer school that I certainly knew as a student and that has been true of our system over time has just been decimated by the budget cuts that have happened. It was sort of interesting, when I was growing up, there were two reasons for going to summer school. One, just to keep up on the reading and all. The second was to keep us out of trouble. So that was probably why I went. That's a really good point. Summer school could play a very vital role in this, because when you think about the loss that happens in students' reading proficiency over the summertime, it gives them that booster shot that's really important. One last comment. Do we think that technology, you know, a lot of kids don't go to the library, or families don't go to the library, they don't take out books, you know, everything's on your iPad, everything's on your phone. Are we seeing sort of a loss of, of families and children actually literally reading books? As I watch kids, I don't think they're not reading books. I think they are. But I think they're accessing them in ways that are far different than I'm used to accessing them. If you just kind of watch and see what kids are doing, a lot of the different fantasy literature and stuff that's out there right now, they're completely transfixed by.
I'd, I'd answer that, too, if I may. This year, I started a book club for children in North Shoreview Elementary School in San Mateo. And we've, we did it in conjunction with the Police Activities League in San Mateo and the San Mateo Public Library. And we've got 12 kids who just graduated, as, and each one of them read a couple of books. We did field trips to take, that matched the book, and we met with their families. And so the families were involved in it. And so next, next year, in the fall, we're gonna try to increase the size of that. It's just a small little dent, but yes, kids are reading and they're really enjoying it.
Supervisor Pine?
A question about the full-day kindergarten for Superintendent Campbell. Could, could you talk a little bit more about how prevalent that is today in the, in the county? I mean, one thing we, we all, we all know, of course, that the... I mean, one thing we, you know, we all, we all know, of course, that the, the more time that kids are in front of teachers and other professional caregivers, you know, the better. But when you talk about full-day kindergarten, I'm assuming you're meaning the, the full school day as opposed to all the way to five o'clock or six o'clock? But I, I've kind of lost track of how many of our school districts today provide that in full-day kindergarten.
It's pretty hit and miss up and down the peninsula. You have several school districts where they'll have one or two schools that may offer full-day kindergarten programs. You have some others that will start a full-day kindergarten program in January that then will go till June, trying to think that developmentally that might be exactly the right balance for children that age. I think the issue with full-day kindergarten is, the research shows that it can have a very important impact on kid, kids' ultimate achievement, but it has to be developmentally appropriate for ones who are five years old. And so it's not sitting in desks doing academic skills, it's being much more engaging and working a lot on social and emotional skills as well as academic skills.
So is it primarily a funding problem that the school districts face, or is there some, you know, debate amongst school districts about the efficacy of?
Well, the interesting question with funding is basically a kindergarten teacher today works the full contract day that a first-grade, second-grade teacher works. So it's not a, it's not really paying for the certificated teacher. It's how do you make sure that that individual has the support and resources that they need to address the needs of the kids that age? So it's not as much financially as really having to add a whole new group of certificated employees. It's more how do you target classified assistants in the classroom and being sure that the resources are there to provide what would be a really rich program for kids.
Okay, thank you.
Before, don't go yet. Any other questions? Supervisor Slocum?
Thank you. I'd like to compliment Supervisor Groom, Erica, and the Superintendent on your work. The Big Lift Plan is exactly that, and I look forward to the presentation on June 18th. Is it? I just had a quick question, if I could. You talked about attendance issues that are chronic, and could you just talk about that for a moment and maybe what's being done about that and the data and what it tells us?
Sure. Basically, as far as attendance is concerned, as Erica mentioned, you need to be in school to be learning and to be achieving proficiency in the different content standards. If you miss school, and what we're finding as we look at the data is chronic attendance patterns begin very early, and they actually begin in kindergarten. And if student, if parents keep their kids home, just for whatever reason they may be keeping them home, not that the kids are, are sick, but there's some other family reason, that tends to accelerate over time, and the student tends to miss more and more school, and that pattern continues as they get into elementary school. A variety of districts, the Redwood City School District is a perfect example right now, are really going in and through the computer data systems that we have now, they're able to track very carefully who's missing school and then intervene right away so that calls are made home, home visits happen, so that we can get parents understanding the importance of kids being in school and get them back in school. Obviously, if someone's ill, they need to be home, but there are a lot of reasons that kids don't come to school that we need to make sure we're getting them back.
Thank you. Before you go, just to make a comment that Supervisor Campbell, or not Supervisor, but Superintendent Ann Campbell, myself, and several of us went to the Kent Awards, and so I was really impressed with a lot of the innovation that schools are involved in today. So that was really impressive evening. One question, you talked about a quality preschool, and I know for a period of time when Rob Reiner's initiative first passed, Redwood City actually embarked on having preschool for all, and I guess it afterwards fell apart because of funding reasons. When you talk about quality preschool, I know Supervisor Pine and I have both been on the First Five Commission, and, you know, we do, the First Five Commission does certify and kind of oversee and super, and, and evaluate a quality preschool. But are you talking about quality preschools being attached to school districts, or is they privately run entities, or is there a variety of different models?
I think all of the above, quite frankly. I think what we are hoping to do from the PPLC's point of view is really target certain areas within our county and look to see what assets are already there that we can build upon. In some districts, that may be to expand preschools that are offered through the K, through the elementary school system. In others, it may be through various nonprofit organizations and various governmental agencies that are offering preschool programs. I, I would say that what we've learned from the preschool-for-all experience in Redwood City is that we've been following those students longitudinally as they move through the Redwood City School District, and they're in the end of third grade right now in that age bracket, they are maintaining their academic progress over time, whereas the students who didn't have access to that quality preschool program are in a very different place academically. So we've got some very, very good local data that shows the efficacy of that model.
Thank you. Supervisor Pine, you had another comment?
I just wanted to share my enthusiasm for, for the work of the team and compliment you for pushing this really critical agenda forward. I did, I served on school boards for eight years, and we wrestled all the time with the achievement gap, and, and it's no secret now that that gap, as you explained, starts very, very early. And if we have any chance of dealing with it, it's in these early years. So, you know, investment of our resources at, at, you know, during the beginning of a, a young child's life is, can have just enormous dividends, and so I'm, I'm very, very excited to see this work and, you know, looking forward to the presentation on the 16th and, and making some things happen. And I think the timing is really perfect with the President's kind of call to action for preschool, and perhaps with a little luck, you know, we can, or not with a little luck, we could very, very well be a real national model and perhaps draw funding from others and certainly provide an example for others, just as the country seems to, or the President has acknowledged that how important early childhood investments are.
Thank you. We certainly, on behalf of the PPLC, want to thank you for the time today. I'm also realizing, we want to introduce to you Joe Rodriguez and Jane Gardner, who have been helping us coordinate all of the work that we've been doing and have been a very vital part of this work as well. So thank you, and we look forward to seeing you on June 18th.
Not, not to one-up you, but I spent nine years on Charter School, so to your eight. But we also had, we had a thing called Gelk. It was on the Garfield Early Learning, and we actually could not afford it after a period of time and had to turn it over to their city, Redwood City. So we have some experience with preschool, and it does in fact make a significant difference. And, you know, it's really appalling to see that 88% of the dropouts could not read proficiently at third grade, and we really need to do something. So I'll also look forward to your report back on June 18th.
Let me also remind you that we've invited all of you to our May 31 briefing, 7:30 in the morning at the San Mateo Public Library.
We'll be there.
Excellent.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing that to the board. Thanks. Next item is, or item number four, is to conduct a public hearing under the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act regarding the issuance of the California Municipal Finance Authority of a loan in an amount not to exceed $3 million for the purpose of financing, refinancing, or reimbursing the Carey School for the cost of constructing, renovating, remodeling, replacing, improving, furnishing, and equipping educational facilities owned and operated by the Carey School. I will open a public hearing. Any comments? Mr. Byers?
No, it's okay. I, you're right. I mean, this is a matter of, the board is sort of a vehicle for the public hearing in the event that any, any members of the public wish to address whether, in fact, the financing should take place. So opening the public hearing is appropriate, and then closing it, and then, if inclined, approving the resolution before you.
No comments, and there are no speakers on it, so entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
On favor? Aye. Okay. Next is to adopt a resolution approving the issuance of the California Municipal Finance Authority.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
A second, that.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay.
Supervisor Horsley, if I may, if I could just ask a question of counsel about this vehicle in general, this, this financing vehicle. I think I see Kristen Anderson in the back. We had a discussion recently about whether this vehicle might be, could be applied to financing constructions of preschools, and I just wanted to get your thoughts on that, so that they could issue tax exempt.
I certainly, appears to me to be within, within the realm, yeah. I mean, the financing is available for, for nonprofits as well as, as public agencies through this California Municipal Finance Authority. And so it's a, it's a real, it's an excellent tool for financing for, for various projects. I don't know, is somebody here that you recognize today that, from the California Finance Municipal Authority, they might be able to give you some, some experience?
Oh, actually, there is. I didn't see her in the back.
After you speak, could you fill out one of these little R slips for me? Thank you.
Hi, Mona Demetranko from the California Municipal Finance Authority. Tax exempt financing is available for a variety of different types of businesses, including nonprofits, as Mr. Byers had indicated. It's also available for multifamily housing, which we met at, and exempt facilities, just a variety of different uses. It is coupled with bank financing, or, or can also be done in the public markets. So it's very, I would say, bankable-type transactions that get done in this, in this manner.
Yeah, we've seen this mechanism used a couple of times now, and, and as we think about preschool for all, there's going to be facility needs, and, you know, possibly this might be a, a tool that could be helpful.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next items, item number five, is a resolution determining that public convenience or necessity would be served by the issuance of an on-sale beer and wine license to Hop Dogma Brewing Company LLC for the premises at 30 Avenue Portola, Suite 1B, El Granada, California. Mr. Byers?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, or otherwise known as ABC, has the exclusive power to regulate the manufacture and importation and, as well as sale of alcoholic beverages in California. So this exclusive power is given to, to the state of California. Hop Dogma Brewing Company LLC has filed an application with the ABC seeking a license to sell beer and wine in a tasting room to be located at 30 Avenue Portola in El Granada. The ABC has determined that because of the number of licenses currently issued in that census tract, in which the premise, which the premise here is located, is more than the number allowed under the formula established by law. Under the formula, three licenses would be allowed in the census tract, and there are already four existing alcoholic sale establishments. So with the grant of this application, it would be five. Because therefore, the number of licenses is, is, is high for the census tract at issue, state law, and it's in the Business and Professions Code, mandates that the ABC may not issue a license to Hop Dogma without this Board of Supervisors first determining whether the, quote, "public convenience or necessity," unquote, would be served by the issuance of the license. There's some history with this particular application, which I'll walk through briefly. So prior to coming before you, this license application was forwarded to the Midcoast Community Council for, for consideration. The MCC has taken a favorable position on the issuance of this particular license. The matter was also forwarded to the Sheriff's Office, which we do as a matter of course, and the Sheriff's Office does not have any specific concerns about the establishment at this location. They, the Sheriff's Office merely raised kind of general concerns that are associated with alcohol establishments, such as public intoxication and things of that nature, but they don't have any specific concerns in the context of this, of this license. So the recommendation before you today is to, is for the Board to grant the application request and find that the public necessity and convenience would be served by the issuance of the license. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? I'm going to move approval of the application.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you.
Mr. President, I wonder if I could ask Mr. Byers a question. I was out of the room on item number four. Can I register a vote, a positive vote to the clerk, or do I just have to miss it?
Well, you know, our bylaws don't really address that question. I would say, because we don't, the fact that you were not present for the vote would probably indicate that you should not.
Okay. Fine.
Okay, item number six then, is a Measure A report back to Medical Services in Pescadero, La Honda, Loma Mar, and San Gregorio. Mr. Mophie?
Mr. President, members of the Board, this is another of a continuing series of report backs on Measure A. Supervisor Horsley has been working for a number of months with Puente, residents of these areas that were just mentioned, our Health Services Agency, to see what can be done to increase the level of medical care services in some of these very rural and underserved areas. As you know, the, the San Mateo Medical Center has in years past had several very active programs in some of these areas. Unfortunately, they hadn't received the, the level of patient assistance needed to, to continue them. They've been consolidated in the Half Moon Bay area. But we think this is a new approach with a more consistent and intensive outreach to the communities, as well as using a mobile van with variable hours of service. All of these things, we believe, will certainly increase the, the volume of patients that will receive health care in these areas, and we're very hopeful that over the next two years that we will be able to meet the targets that are listed in the performance measurements in, in this report. So we are recommending that for fiscal year 1314, tentatively approximately $550,000 be set aside in Measure A funding for this program, and in year two, fiscal year 1415, that amount would be 400, approximately $400,000. And if we do determine during the course of the next two years that in fact we can build the volume of patients in this area to the level that we can sustain, we would certainly come back to the Board, not only, obviously, with continuation of the program, but a permanent site for the program as well. That concludes my report, Mr. President, members of the Board. If you have any questions, I'll certainly attempt to answer them.
Before you do that, before any questions, just to point out, one of the reasons that I sought this service for the South Coast is that after viewing a lot of farm labor housing in a number of the communities on the far, on the South Coast, as well as La Honda and Loma Mar, is that I started seeing things like diabetics and amputees, so actually languishing in farm labor housing, children with asthma, actually some of them being exposed to herbicides because of the fact that sometimes the farm workers don't realize that they really, after they've been spraying pesticides, that they need to really change their clothing before they come into the home, and as a consequence, a lot of the children suffer from asthma. See adults with hypertension and early diabetes, heart attacks, strokes, all the things that we talk about that are preventable. And I'd also like to see, there's a number of younger farmers who are very low-income, who really have no access to health care. And so that was my reasoning for seeking this funding. I think it's really needed. I think there's actually a population of about 5,000 residents from La Honda, Loma Mar, and the South Coast, and Loma Mar is the home to, or the residence of, a number of very low-income folks. So can't think of what else I was going to say about it, but it's, you know, oh, I know, it's just the farm workers. The farm worker population is about 500, somewhat less than the, the total 5,000, but they really do not have access, and really is very difficult for them to access our clinic in, in Half Moon Bay. You know, as you may know, they work about six days a week, and on the seventh day, they're in church, and so it's really, not only that, the kids and families, they don't necessarily get sick on a time schedule, and so it's really difficult for them to access it. So we're hoping that this service, which will be, I believe is going to be a So we're hoping that this service, which will be, I believe is going to be really available on weekends and at nights, not seven days a week, but on some, the hours that are more convenient for both residents as well as farm workers and their families. So if there are any questions?
I'd just like to add, if I may, that the transportation on the coast is not the best, and it's not as frequent as it should be. And like Adrian and I serve on the Sam transport, and we've just been going through a service redesign. We have increased some of the transportation on the coast, but this will alleviate the need for all of the South County residents to have to worry about transportation to get, to see a doctor or to get some treatment. So I think it's a very innovative idea and certainly look forward to when we make, when we take our final action later in the year.
Any other comments? Supervisor Pye?
You know, the memo seems to indicate that there'd be a halftime team staffing the, staffing the mobile health care vehicle. So would it be basically available for other uses in the other time? Or are there other expected potential uses when it's not deployed in the South Coast?
I think the primary use is for these communities. Certainly, at other times, the vehicle would be available for health care in other areas, provided that there was sufficient staffing and resources to do that. But obviously, it's a county vehicle, and we'll try to use it to the maximum that we have resources to do it.
And the patients we serve, I, you know, I imagine some might qualify for health insurance under the Affordable Care Act. You know, or what is our thinking on that possibility?
It's my guess that probably most of these patients would not qualify for health care under ACA. I think that, and many of them ultimately find their way to county facilities one way or the other for care. So I think this extends basically their health care home closer to them.
I think actually you're correct with some, in that we do have a sort of a core of younger, organic farmers who really make very little money. They probably will be eligible for ACA.
The reason I, the thought that crossed my mind is, I mean, the remote nature of these communities, you know, I think it makes it difficult for everyone to access health care. And to the extent that even 10% of these folks qualify, they still might want to utilize the facility. I would think they could potentially utilize.
And actually, I would like the Health Department to actually explore that potential. So, in any case, we do have one speaker, Carrie LaBelle from Puente.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board, Manager Maltby Holland and Councilor Beers. This is a happy day for the South Coast. We've been working a long time to bring health care back to the South Coast. And I'm always happy to give a shout out to EMS, because as you know, EMS has been the sole provider of emergency health services on the South Coast for some time. We couldn't do without it. I also want to thank Director Fraser and her team, Susan Ehrlich and Rebecca Ash at the Coastside Clinic, for working with us, the county manager, Supervisor Horstley, and our colleagues at Stanford, to come up with a plan that we think begins to meet the needs of our community. And it's our hope that over the next two years, we will be able to make the case to have a bricks and mortar clinic on the South Coast. Currently, there would be no place to hold one, which is why we're seeking a mobile solution, partly because of the distance in our area, about 160 square miles. But also physically, there's just no place to put a structure of this kind. It's an innovative solution because unlike most mobile health clinics, this one will be providing not only primary care, but preventive care to address the numbers of issues that Supervisor Horstley addresses. And we do think it'll be a closer to home solution for people that are currently using Coastside Clinic. There are a number of people currently enrolled in the ACE program and Healthy Kids, Healthy Families Medi-Cal, who we believe will be using this service as well as continuing to see providers at Coastside Clinic. And the solution allows a seamless relationship between health services on the South Coast and the health system in general, which is what we want, because we know that no mobile solution can deal with the kind of specialized care that will be needed for many of the people that seek services. We're excited to see this project move forward, and we thank you very much.
Thank you, Carrie. Well, I also like to thank Jeanne Fraser also that was working with Puente, Stanford, and us on this, I think, really important recommendation. So I'm going to make the motion to direct staff to appropriate Measure A funding and of 551,180 in fiscal year 201314. And I won't read the rest of it.
Mr. President, I thought we were just directing this to our final decision-making process, not actually making approvals.
Are we doing that? Oh, okay, so we're recommending this to the final decision then? Okay, so I'll make a motion to recommend it to the final decision.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Item number seven is the County Manager's Report, number four.
Mr. President, members of the Board, you, there's two elements to my report today. One is Assembly Bill Five, and then I want to give you an update on the Governor's May revision to the budget. As you have seen in the packet, Assembly Bill Five, carried by Assemblyman Amiano, provides significantly enhanced benefits and rights for the homeless population. We think that there are some elements of this bill that would be very difficult to implement. While giving one population very specific rights, the police have sort of a balancing act with respect to the homeless population in our community. There are times where there are instances where it is appropriate, given the nature of actions that individuals take, that there is a police response. And so we're not sure that the appropriate level of balance between the needs of the community as well as the needs of this particular population are evident in this bill. And specifically in this county, we don't think that, as far as I know, I could remember any instances, where our law enforcement agencies have really acted in any way that would be inappropriate as related to the homeless population. In fact, there are many instances, in fact, some programs in this county, like the HOT program in San Mateo, in which we have really developed very specific responses to the needs of this population using law enforcement agencies. Finally, there's language in this bill about rights of confidentiality of the homeless population. And as you know, this is a population that interacts many of our systems. And I think this would just create one more silo of information, making it very difficult to serve the population. So for all of those reasons, we think that we're recommending today that the Board adopt a resolution opposing this bill. Although it's well-intentioned, we think it's just, it has more problems than it solves.
One of the things that troubles me about this is to follow all of these rules, we would have to spend a fair amount of money, and this is unfunded. And we're already spending a lot of money on positive programs for the homeless in this county. And so it just seems like it's, would be self-defeating.
It does create another protected class. Any other comments? Let's have one speaker on this, Martin Fox.
Thank you again, Supervisor Horstley and members of the Board. Please vote to oppose AB 5. The so-called homeless bill of rights is another manifestation of the wishful and muddled thinking that would keep people who wear smelly clothing and forge through garbage cans looking for food while talking to their hallucinations from receiving the treatment they need to recover from untreated serious mental illnesses. That turns them into the homeless people in the first place. AB 5 proposes to perpetuate policies and procedures which limit mental health treatment to those living with mental illness who have the capacity to understand their need for treatment and deny treatment to those who don't. AB 5 seeks to dress service organizations in the clothing of respectability instead of revealing ineffective, inefficient, and overlapping programs that are used to perpetuate the existence of organizations that are not performing their stated missions. Put another way, adopting AB 5 would be an admission that the citizens of California are being held hostage by an intellectually and morally bankrupt legislature that is in desperate need of wholesale change. Please vote to oppose AB 5.
I'll move to the resolution opposition. I wonder if it would be helpful, though, for us to send some information to Assemblymember Amiano's office, talking, letting him know why, that we think it's very restrictive and that, you know, we'd rather see a proactive approach towards working with the homeless as we've done in this county. So that, you know, if he gets enough of that feedback, maybe he can flip his legislation to something more proactive. So I just think that might be helpful. Okay, but I move opposition.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I also wanted to give you an update on the Governor's May revision. As you know by now, the Governor has continued his very cautious budgetary approach with respect to the estimate of state revenues. In fact, for the first time in a long time, the Governor is taking even a more cautious approach than the legislative analyst that has been more aggressive in forecasting future revenues. So sort of a flip of positions. The Governor, in the May revision, has proposed a $2.9 billion increase in funding for K through 14 education. Also, higher Medi-Cal costs are being recognized in the amount of approximately $467 million in the May revision and a reduction in state borrowing costs of about the same amount of money. There are a number of challenges that we see in the Governor's May revision that we're still analyzing. We'll bring back a more thorough analysis in June. Most troubling is the plan to redirect the 1991 health realignment funds from counties to the state via a formula that identifies so-called savings with respect to the implementation of the Affordable Care Act. We're not sure, nor is anyone sure, including the Governor, that there are in fact savings. In fact, we have some real questions in our mind with the potential loss of federal revenue that we may well see losses in these areas from a financial standpoint. So any act to redirect realignment funding is premature at best. In this proposal, the Governor is redirecting $300 million in 201314 and up to $900 million in the subsequent fiscal year. Also, there's a proposal that would give counties more responsibility for human services, beginning in fiscal year 1617. These programs would include CalWorks, CalWorks with Child Care, and CalFresh administrative costs. Interestingly, the state would use the redirected 1991 realignment funds to pay for this new realignment of programs. In other words, the Governor would be using our money to pay us for new responsibilities. It's a novel approach to budgeting, but one that I suspect will have some real problems with counties if implemented. In addition, we note that the Governor's continued focus on the implementation of the ACA and trying to reduce county costs is certainly premature in that the federal government will pay 100% of the state costs for the first three years. And so we would have time to develop some programmatic experience with respect to these programs before we start redirecting money. And we think that's the prudent and appropriate approach to take. We note that the county continues to be responsible for, under ACA, for the care for the uninsured. And that is likely to be a substantial population in this county. And we continue to use 1991 realignment funds for many more programs than simply indigent care in this county. There are a variety of public health functions that are funded, for instance, from 1991 realignment funds. So I would, I would, I guess I would title this section of the Governor's May revision for the 1991 realignment funding is "When a Deal Is Not a Deal." We made the deal in 1991 with the state to assume responsibilities in exchange for additional revenue. Those responsibilities have grown over the years, far more so than the revenue. And now we have those responsibilities, and the Governor's proposing less revenue to do that. Also, we continue to note the difficulty in our county and others in moving forward to implement the public safety realignment. There is some additional funding, very little in my judgment, of about $70 million for probation costs. But we see that population continuing to grow and continuing to be an additional drain on county funds, far more than the 109 realignment funding that we're getting. So this continues to be a problem. In fact, the Governor is even estimating that there'll be about $30 million less next year in realignment funding than we have this year. He has proposed a prison swap program for sheriffs in which long-term county offenders might be traded for short-term state prison inmates. But I would view that suggestion with very cautious. We seem to lose whenever we trade, it's always a player to be named later, and it's usually half a dozen players to be named later, and that costs us for each player. So that's basically a pretty high-level summation of the May revision proposal. We continue to work on that. There may be, will have implications on excess ERAF as well as the triple-flip vehicle registration funds, which would be extremely problematic for our county. We'll have a full report in June for you.
Any questions, Board members? Done? Okay. It is now time for Board Members' Reports. Supervisor Grum, do you have a report?
Several.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'll be quick. The SWBMA Blue Ribbon Committee that you sent me to, Mr. President, we've completed our work. And will, a recommendation will be coming to all of the members of that JPA in the fall that elected officials constitute the Board of Directors. But a solid technical committee will be appointed and will be a permanent part of those meetings. So that there will be good technical advisory, but the elected officials will be setting the policy. And I think that's going to hit us in the fall. Secondly, in the homeless topic, I went to the San Mateo City Council Study Session last night on the Vendome Hotel. And they, to my great satisfaction, have offered the building for a fee-simple relationship to Shelter Network. So the Vendome will stay open, Shelter Network will continue to operate it, but we will need more funding. And while we're continuing to work to help get that funding, it's only a couple hundred thousand dollars a year to operate it, which isn't a lot. But, you know, in these tough times, it's tough money.
Yeah.
But I'm very, I was very pleased with that decision. And I'd like to adjourn in memory of one person. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Dr. Tony Yancey, who was a professor in the Department of Health Services at the UCLA School of Public Health. She was one of the organizing members advising First Lady Michelle Obama with the Let's Move campaign. Her primary research inches were in chronic disease prevention and adolescent health. You might wonder why I'm asking that we adjourn in her memory. She was going to be the keynote speaker at the conference that I do in the fall on Healthy San Mateo, and she was undergoing severe chemotherapy at that time. But we became kind of email buddies. And when she passed away, I felt like it was a friend that I had had for a long time. She's offered over 100 books, including her book of poetry and art, Supervisor Slocum, called "An Old Soul with a Young Spirit: Poetry in the Era of Desegregation Recovery." It sold out in its first printing. And her newest book is called "Instant Recession," which is how to build a fit nation 10 minutes at a time. And we're starting to introduce that around the county now, that every hour you And we're starting to introduce that around the county now, that every hour you take a 10-minute fitness break and do some stretching and kind of mind and body spirit. So, I would like to adjourn in Dr. Yancey's memory.
Thank you. Actually, I remember attending that Healthy San Mateo, and she, there was a video of her, and you had us all up and dancing, and we probably shouldn't be doing that at the board, we'd probably make better decisions here. In any case, thanks for that. Thanks for your work on that SBWMA as well, and the Vendome Hotel. Supervisor Pine?
Yes. I've, over the last couple of weeks, I've had the chance to visit a number of our mental health facilities and programs. I really appreciate Gene Frazier and Steve Kaplan with arranging these various visits. And just briefly, they've really been eye-opening for me. I started at the Industrial Hotel in South San Francisco, where we have about 40 beds, and this is really critical to our full-service partnership program. And these individuals, you know, they have very serious mental illness and typically all kinds of co-occurring problems that they wrestle with. And oftentimes, you know, they've gone through this whole carousel of psych emergency and subacute care and jail and homelessness, you know, sometimes hundreds of times. So, you know, this facility is really a bare-bones facility, but providing housing and case management is a heck of a lot better than what many of these folks have experienced in the past. I also visited the Cordillares facility for the first time. And also on that same campus is another facility called the Canyon Oaks. Now, so, starting with Canyon Oaks, Canyon Oaks is a new facility the county built to provide a home and intensive services for children and young adults who struggle with mental illness. And it's, you know, it's a modern facility, has school space, you know, lots of great lighting, and very dedicated county employees, you know, helping this small set of children who in the past would be sent off all over the state for care. So, this is something that the county put in place a number of years ago, and we should be very proud of. But then meanwhile, over at Cordillares, we have this 1950s facility, which, you know, the staff and NAMI have done the very best they can with it in terms of, you know, keeping it clean and as attractive as possible, but it is, you know, it's ancient. You know, this is a former, you know, TB hospital. You know, they have these like makeshift ventilate, you know, systems to try to keep the air, bring in, you know, bring in fresh air. You know, you feel immediately like you're in an institution. So, when you contrast that with what we've done with, for the youth at Canyon Oaks, it's really quite startling. And then finally, I also spent some time at a lived experience program where residents struggling with mental health issues who are, whose deficits aren't as severe or who have recovered are involved with programs where the county, where they actually provide insights to the staff about their own journeys through recovery. So, again, I'm really thankful for the staff for helping me make these visits. The dedication of the people that work at these facilities is just extraordinary. And, you know, we have come a great, a long way in this county, thanks to all the staff and NAMI and others, but, you know, there's more to do. And I understand we're going to be looking at Cordillares as part of our capital plan, and that's, you know, again, when you contrast it with the Canyon Oaks, it kind of cries out for improvement and a new approach. Finally, thank you for that, listening to all that. I also, too, wanted to adjourn in memory for Nadia Holliver, who we've all known over the years. Nadia was actually born in Canada and moved to Bedway City when she was four, and then grew up in San Carlos. And after going to Canada College and UC Berkeley and Hastings Law, you know, she spent her life committed to social justice and civic involvement. She started out being very involved in the school community, the PTA, the PTO, you know, the Scouts, AYSO. But also, during that time, she served for six years on the County Planning Commission. In the early 1990s, she was elected to the council and served there with distinction for many years. She was particularly proud of her work on libraries. In fact, in lieu of flowers, she asked that gift to be sent to the library, and was very, very involved in the Sister Cities Commission. So, she was a passionate, a passionate public servant, and we very much missed.
Thank you. I also, we all knew Nadia, it was very difficult watching her decline over the years, so thank you for adjourning her memory.
Supervisor Slocum?
Thank you. I have a couple of items. Thank you. You probably all know that there was a fire in North Fair Oaks, I think it was last week. It was a small eight-unit apartment building. The people lost basically everything. I think the fire started at 5:00 in the morning or so. The thing I wanted to share with you is how impressed and how proud I was of the county response to those families and those kids. When we got to the Fair Oaks School, it was an amazing sight because kids were playing on the floor and things seemed fairly normal. Food had been delivered to the families. Actually saw a young person volunteer to go to Target and buy clothes for the smaller kids, and just the county's response in terms of the housing folks and the human services staff. The Red Cross was there. And of course, the first responders, the county fire, Menlo Park Fire, Redwood City Fire did a fantastic job and were, they had groups of kids out on the sidewalk, and the firemen were showing them equipment and really making them feel comfortable with the situation. And also, the police and our sheriff's department and the Highway Patrol were there, providing safety and control of the streets and so forth and so on. But it was just an amazing sight where, in this tragedy, people came together to help one another. And I was, as a new supervisor, just so proud of the county and its response, and wanted to share that with you. Some happier news, the North Fair Oaks Council, and I'll pass this out if I could, is sponsoring on Saturday, June 1st, Be Seen Keeping It Clean event in North Fair Oaks. And let me just thank Irving Torres of my staff, who has worked tirelessly on this. We're, sorry, we're planning, we're planning for 150 volunteers who have committed to show up to help clean up the neighborhood. And as a special part of this, we're actually doing a beautification project at the Fair Oaks Elementary School, where we're going to redo two community gardens and do something with the soil that's going to make the vegetables and the plants grow much better. We're going to serve lunch afterwards. There'll be T-shirts and reusable bags for folks. And just to thank the sponsors, Recology, Recycle Works, Environmental Health, the Sheriff's Office, the San Mateo County Credit Union, the city of Redwood City, El Bruense, and the Peninsula Covenant Church. So, that's Saturday, June 1st, and you have a beautiful flyer there. Would invite you all to come down and help us clean up the neighborhood. In terms of adjourning, I have two adjourning memories of. One was, is Bob Burry, who just lives around the corner, lived around the corner from First met Bob in probably 1986, when I was campaigning for county clerk, and he supported me. He passed away recently at the Veterans Hospital in Palo Alto. He had a lot of kids and a lot of grandkids, and as some of you may know, was married to June, his wife, for some 70 years. And he was Mr. Redwood City. He had done the city council for 24 years. He was a community leader. And I always used to buy my tires from his tire shop in Redwood City there. And so, Bob will be missed, and we extend our prayers and thoughts to his family and especially his wife, June, who I think still lives around the corner. And secondly, Fernando Vega, who you probably know or knew. He was 88 years old when he passed away, and he, too, was on the city council in Redwood City, was a trustee in the Redwood City Elementary School District, and had been on the grand jury, and also served on the San Mateo County Civil Service Commission. Was actually born in Houston, raised in Brownsville, and later in life moved to the Bay Area, to Redwood City, and was a mechanic at Pan Am Airlines. And he's still, there's still a market in North Fair Oaks, Vega's Market, which he started years and years ago, and I think his sons operate that now. And he, too, had, has a lot of children and grandchildren, and I know his family will miss Fernando. And our thoughts and prayers go to the Vega family also. Thank you for that.
Just before you do, Supervisor Tessier, just, Bob Burry was, when we were building the jails in Redwood City, he was the, if he wasn't the mayor, he was on the city council. I remember we took him on a tour of the jails, and we did not have the political opposition of the city of Redwood City, because he could see that the old jail that used to be on the fourth floor here was really inhumane. And so, he supported us, and we were able to build that jail across the street. And Fernando, I knew for many years as well, he was really interested in education. He was a really great community supporter. And I remember, there's a story, actually, you and I talked about, where his child, when he went to high school, they put him, he wanted his son to, all his kids to be very vigorously educated, and when they went to school, they were given all the easy classes, and he went to challenge that and said, "No, no, I want my kids in the AP classes." So, he was a great dad, great grandfather, and a great local business person. Supervisor Tessier?
Yes. I, too, wanted to extend my condolences to the Holliver family. I, you know, you mentioned the planning commission. I actually served on the planning commission with her, and, you know, she was very, very bright. She served as the chair part of the time that I was there as well, and she really will be sorely missed. And just a second, a quick announcement, Saturday, June 8th, Disaster Preparedness Day again this year at the Fairgrounds from 10:00 to 11:00, free entry, free parking. So, you go to Disaster Preparedness Day, and then you can spend the rest of the day at the fair, so.
Any giveaways?
Just the free parking, free entry. That's it, Don.
Well, you always have these great giveaways.
Toys for you this year, Don.
In any case, I had to say that. In any case, I just wanted to report back on, we had a tour with Susan Egman, who's the Assemblywoman in Charge, or she's the Chair of the State Agricultural Subcommittee of the State Legislature, actually is, comes from an Ag family. We were joined by Rich Gordon, who actually set the tour up, and new Assemblyperson, Kevin Mullin, and we took a tour of some of the, just the highlights, with the Harley Farms, Blue House Farms, Figoni Farms. And we were driven around in county vans by none other than Nicholas Calderon and Steve Monowitz. And I'd also like to adjourn in memory, this 16-year-old, 16- or 17-year-old youth who was shot and killed in the city of East Palo Alto yesterday. He was in a car with some of his friends. The other friends were shot, in any case, they ran to his home and had his father come out, and I can't think of a worse thing for a father to see, so adjourn in memory of him. And I know the Sheriff's Department is sending out a team to assist that city with the recent spate of gang shootings and violence, so look forward to report back from maybe the Sheriff's Department and their effectiveness. We do have one last speaker, and it is Martin Fox.
Thank you again. I'll be brief. The Community Corrections Partnership met here last Tuesday afternoon. I urge you to listen to the recording of what took place at that meeting at about the 30-minute mark, because we learned that almost 90% of the AB 109 population who were assessed as needing alcohol or drug abuse treatment was receiving it. Despite Chief Manheimer's follow-up questions, we never learned what percentage of the AB 109 population who needed mental health treatment were receiving it. Please adopt policies and procedures that address treatment resistance in high-risk populations like AB 109ers and the serious mentally ill. We need to stop playing hide the ball. Laura's Law is a system's response to a system's problem, just like the Early Learning Initiative that the superintendent talked about earlier. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. We'll now adjourn to closed session. If we return from closed session, because Mr. Biers, can you report on the results of closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The board took no action. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now adjourn.